All right, we're going to call on Murfreesboro City Council's regular meeting to order January 9th, 2019. We only have three things that we're going to talk about today. So Craig, we'll turn over, I guess, to Erin. We'll be talking about our mid-year budget review. And Craig, before we get started, I see Mr. McKnight back there. Do you want to introduce some new hires that we've had?
Absolutely. Greg McKnight has joined us. Greg's worked for us in a consulting capacity through Gary and Pinnacle Builders for a while on some of our projects and has done some outstanding work on getting our projects in line and on budget and delivered on time. And so because we have enough projects going on and we will for several years, we decided to move some of that talent in-house and had the opportunity to do that with Greg. So he has joined us as of Monday. We're very excited for Greg to be here. So he'll be working with Gary. He'll be housed someday when we get done with our construction in the city manager's office. And so if you get a chance, say hi to Greg.
All right, Erin, we'll let you have the show. We'll talk about our mid-year budget review.
Okay. I'm just going to go over some highlights for the FY19 budget so far. Throughout the year, budgets should be evaluated and monitored. As we move through the year, we may find that our assumptions for the budget need to be reevaluated. It's also good to review the economic factors, possible new revenue sources, organization priorities, and review our budget projections. During the annual budget process, council determines the priorities for the upcoming fiscal year. And then based on that feedback, the city management will develop a framework for the budget. Departments submit their recommendations to the city manager and finance. And then we have review sessions held with the city manager's office and members of finance before submitting the budget to council by May 15th. Council then holds public workshops to review the budgets in detail and gather more info as it relates to the annual budget. The budget has to be adopted by June 30th, and we do this by ordinance through two ratings. So we have a conservative budget approach. We look at our historical trends on major revenues, new legislation which may impact our state share taxes, other economic factors to help gauge where we think revenues will fall in the upcoming fiscal year. Expenditures are applied by reviewing our recurring costs, our historical trends, and planned projects. And we base this approach around the city council's priorities, which are currently safe and livable neighborhoods, strong and sustainable financial and economic health, excellent service with a focus on customer service, and engaging our community. So council and the city manager's office have identified several budget goals, including generating a balanced budget by working to remove the dependence on fund balance, ensure fiscal sustainability by reviewing our current practices, updating fees and rates periodically to help cover the cost of services, maintain our excellent bond ratings. Currently, we hold a Moody's rating of AA1 and an SVP rating of AA. These high ratings provide us lower interest rates on our debt. And we also want to make sure we have the resources necessary so that we can provide the highest quality customer service to our citizens, businesses, and visitors. So here's a look at the current year's budgeted revenues. As you can see, sales tax, which is both state and local, make up more than 35% of our total budgeted revenues. Property tax accounts for an additional 28%. All other taxes account for about 12 and 1/2%, while charges for services make up 7 and 3/4%. Here's a look at the current year's budgeted expenditures. With the city being a service-based organization, salaries and benefits top these categories at nearly 42%. Debt service makes up 22 and 1/2%. And then all other operating expenses account for about 34%. While property taxes came in slightly above budget, we have seen that local sales tax is trending just below. So far, these differences are nominal. Right now, we're just short around $220,000 cumulatively for the year. And we've yet to see the Christmas numbers. Those will come in next month. State sales tax is also down from budget, around $84,000 cumulatively. Both local and state, though under budget, are above FY18's collection. So we are still having a positive trend, just not as strong as we had originally anticipated.
Is the explanation for that online sales? Is that the assumption?
It certainly could be. There's, you know, you can see a definite dip. I really have no idea why it's... We may have been more aggressive than we should have been during budget. Haven't seen higher trends in the past years, where now it's just kind of leveling off. You know, maybe consumers just aren't going as strong with things politically. I'm not sure.
But when you're seeing population growth, you should see growth in those numbers.
You would think, yeah.
Every year. And if you're not seeing with population growth, that tells you that somewhere you're seeing a sales decline.
Right.
And that sales decline, I'm assuming it would be people not shopping at brick and mortars and doing online shopping.
Right.
I mean, we're just not seeing any sales tax revenue generated.
Right.
I think it's probably... You're right. I think it's a combination of things. I think that's one of the factors that all the cities are struggling with right now. And some of that's being addressed with some changes in the structure of how online sales are going to be taxed in the future. So we're taking a hard look at that. And then we'll watch that in the legislature as we go through in the legislature on how that's being done. I think we're seeing some cooling in the economy on housing starts and things like that. We'd give an indication of that maybe there's a little bit of a slowdown there. It's nothing dramatic like in the past.
We're only off 2 tenths, less than 2 tenths of a percent.
Yeah.
We're pretty close.
I think nationwide, statewide, you're right on. Locally, we're... Planning Commission's not seeing any significant reduction in the amount of starts. I mean, it's down some, but it's not that significant.
So maybe it's just a breather. We hope so. And then, as Erin said, I think budgeting-wise, you know, we may have been a little bit more aggressive than we have been in the past this year. And so all that probably accounts to something that February will be a big important number because that's when we'll see Christmas.
Okay, so moving on, here's our other state shared revenues. And they're all trending over FY18 as well. These include, you know, things like beer and alcoholic beverage taxes and our gas and motor fuel taxes. Okay, so here's a look at where we stand so far this year with regards to our taxes. For local taxes, we budgeted almost $110 million for the year. And so far through December, we've recognized about $71.5 million. The majority of this comes from our property tax, which we recognize in one lump amount. And then the sales tax is spread out through the rest of the year, as are the rest of our local taxes, like hotel motel and things like that. So far, for property tax, we've recognized $41.5 million, and for sales tax, $23.5 million. And here's a look at other collections as compared to budget. In our intergovernmental revenues, I did pull out the grant-related revenues where the grant expenses have not yet been incurred, just to show more apples to apples here. But so far, we're, for the most part, right on trend there. So during the FY19 budget process, a development services division was discussed and has since been put into place. This new division will allow for streamlined development processes between the city management, planning, and building and codes. This division includes appointing an assistant city manager over development coordination and an executive director over development services. As you know, the city manager's also been working to streamline the city's operations and provide enhanced oversight with fewer resources. This has allowed for the elimination of four separate departments and instead operate those as divisions within larger departments of the city. These include moving senior citizens into parks and rec, breaking street out of engineering as a division and making its own department again, and then moving urban environmental, civic plaza, and parking garage as divisions of the street department. As the city continues to grow and evolve, so should the way we manage our operations. Besides the development services division, there have been several other structural changes to the city this year. Four other new divisions have been developed, including the utility enterprise division, which consists of electric, water resources, and stormwater, airport, and solid waste; public works for engineering and transportation and streets; community services for parks and rec, golf, and public health, or outside agencies as we know them; and then internal services for IT, HR, communications, purchasing, fleet services, and facilities maintenance. In addition to these division changes, the city manager's office has also gone through a bit of a transformation. As I said before, we developed an assistant city manager for development coordination. And under that, a director of project management position was also created to help manage the city's various major projects, rather than outsourcing to third-party consultants. And that's Greg that y'all just met. The budget director position was created. The executive director positions for community services and development services are housed in the city manager's department. The public information office has been created and is now under the city manager's umbrella, rather than spread out throughout the various departments of the city. And then we're going to have an addition of one administrative staff person to help assist the department and handle the council agenda process. Now, as you know, we're preparing to issue $58 million... Sorry?
Let me ask a question about the golf facility. I know in 2018, we discussed possibly closing the VA golf course. Where are we on that?
Is Angela here? She's not here. It's now part of our community services division. And as part of that, when Angela took over that, she looked hard at the VA and the VA course. And to be honest, I think she went in with a view of that might be the best option. But once she got there and looked at it, I think she got a little bit excited about all the possibilities that could be there. Whether it stays with golf or becomes much more part of a parks facility and a parks recreation, obviously still focused on golf, but run more closer to the parks as opposed to the way Old Fort, which is a truly top golf course, is a question that we're still looking at. But I think right now, what we've seen out of VA with some management changes out there and some coordination, that we may be able to solve some of the budget issues that it creates and still maintain it. At the end of the day, when we do budget next year, we'll come back with a recommendation. But right now, you know, things are much more positive than what we had thought in the past.
That's one golf course. I'm not familiar with the others, but I know a lot of retirees, senior citizens, they use that golf course, and it fits their budget. I just personally would hate to see us close it. So if we can just, when we do review it, if we can look at all possibilities of keeping it, I'd like to see us do that.
Yeah, and we'll take a hard look at that. One of the factors that's important in that is that we don't really own that. We have an agreement with the VA to manage that area. That's up this year. So some of what we'll have to look at is see what type of an agreement we can get with the VA going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the federal government's never been willing to give us a long-term contract on that property. And that's always been part of the challenge, is because you don't have a long-term contract, it's hard to put fixed facilities on it. So the clubhouse, which is a portable trailer, has always, you know, and truly it deteriorated over time. But Madeline's exactly on point. For those of us who don't want to get in the way at Old Fort and hold up people who are really good golfers and seniors and people who just like a shorter course and aren't really worried that much about whether or not the grain is laying exactly the right direction on the greens, certainly, yeah. Certainly, it plays an important role, I think, in Murfreesboro's golf community. And it probably played a more important role before we opened up the course for juniors out next to Old Fort, the Bloomfield. But even so, I think from the senior standpoint, it is a price point golf course. And their expectation is much lower. I mean, they don't want it maintained like Old Fort. That's... But the price point is so dang good that, you know, you go out there and you get a pool cart and you walk around and you haven't expended a whole lot of money and you've still got to hit a few golf balls. So I agree with Madeline 100% on that. And of course, I've talked with Angela about it. And again, Angela has since the last few months... I should let her speak for herself, but I think her... I think her attitude about the golf course and its viability have improved. And so I think we're in a pretty good situation out there right now.
I think one of the benefits of the community services division, we've seen this both with the senior center and with golf, is bringing in a different management philosophy and management abilities, different resources from management. So one of the difficulties that we were having with the VA course relates a lot to that. And since we're able to bring it into a larger organization and share much more some of the resources, it gets a little bit easier to handle those things.
All changes sometimes have challenges that come along with them. But you mentioned the senior center, and I'll pass along to all council members, all the seniors that I've talked to are extremely excited about the changes. And that's not something normally I would report to you. But the changes on the hours and stuff at the senior center, that being open on Sunday afternoon, they love being open longer hours. They're just... They're the happiest at the senior centers that they have been in years. And so I'm glad to see that we made some changes and they're really happy.
Yeah, well, credit to Angela for all of her hard work out there on both of those.
And not only that, you know, quality of life for people. I would like to see us as a council in 2019 make a special effort to... And I know things cost. You know, we have to have money to operate. But I'd like to see us shift a little more of our decision-making into the quality of life for people to enjoy. Because I know as a retiree with fixed income, and if that's something you love to do, not only golfing or whatever else comes up, I would like to see us be more mindful of individuals' quality of life and making them happy. I know we can't make everybody happy. Some things cost. But I'd like for us to put more emphasis in 2019 on people and not so much on what things cost. So I know we have to consider that, but let's make people's quality of life much better in the city.
You got any plans for a fishing lake for retirees? That might speed my program up a little bit.
With a firing range next to it? It's just turning our wish list.
Buying the whole thing?
Call Adam's place.
How do you catch goldfish?
Try and hit all the needs.
Sorry.
So we've also been working to get our old debt proceeds spent down and have reevaluated projects based on our construction costs and priorities. Construction costs have increased greatly in the last couple of years. And as such, several projects have been let out for bid and then been brought back in and overhauled to reduce the bid prices, to be more in line with what we budgeted when they were brought to y'all in the CIP. One example is the airport terminal project. The bids on this project originally came in around $9 million, whereas the CIP had an estimate closer to $6 million. After considerable staff work and taking a new approach to our building process by using the design-build process, the city was able to bring the project down closer to $5 million. Another example is Parks and Rec Maintenance Sheds. We originally planned on building two sheds for around $1.2 million, but the estimates came in double at $2.4. So again, redesign and restructuring of existing city properties allowed us to go to just one building and reduce the construction costs even further to get us down at about $850,000. Fire and Rescue Station 11 construction costs were originally budgeted in the CIP at $3.5 million, and bids came in 1.3 higher. Redesigning the building got this down almost half a million. So we continue to work to come in within our budgets here.
I think the other thing to recognize on CIP projects is that we are going to put a lot more effort into our initial budgeting and how we pricing out projects and so we can give council a little better idea. Sometimes, however, you know, we'll do a project and it'll be two or three years before we actually get it started. What we want to do is to continue to update the CIP and our estimates so that we have a current estimate that's all-inclusive when we talk about a CIP project.
Right. So in December, council approved several items for budget amendments. These include fire federal grants and related expenses for the 27 new positions; county share costs for the city's share of the property assessment; land sale revenues and expenses; road construction expenses; economic development; and the use of police and drug funds restricted fund balances. As far as potential budget amendments, we plan to talk next with you about the possibility of increasing the hotel motel tax rate. Our current rate is 2 and 1/2% and is anticipated to bring in around $1.7 million in revenues. State law allows us to increase up to 5%, which is where the county's at currently. The estimated annual impact, if we made this change, would be another $1.7 million. If we are able to go ahead and increase that this year, say with a March 1 effective date, we could probably bring in closer to half a million for the rest of the year in additional hotel motel tax receipts. These funds could then be allocated by council to tourism and economic development. Craig's also, I think, going to talk with you about studying or implementing development impact fees. And these fees will address the impact of development on public safety, schools, and roads. The funds collected would be committed for these purposes and then would reduce our future debt for capital projects related to those different types of projects. Our future budget goals include generating a balanced budget. We want to reduce the use of fund balance between fiscal years '20 and '22 so that by fiscal year '23, we're no longer using fund balance to balance our budget. We want to introduce new and increased revenues, such as the impact fees, increasing hotel motel taxes, look at rate increases for our service-based departments, including solid waste, parks and rec, golf, and building and codes. We should also review our property tax rate annually. Our future goals should also include maintaining our excellent bond rating, leveraging our economic development opportunities, and continue providing resources to provide the great customer service to our citizens, businesses, and visitors. Okay, so just a recap of what we've discussed. While expenses are staying in line with what we budgeted, we are seeing revenues come in slightly lower. Therefore, we do expect that we'll use fund balance this year. The solid waste fee is effective this month, and we anticipate, based on our current billings, to bring in around $1 million in revenues this fiscal year. This rate will be evaluated annually, and more will be coming. But we do expect incremental rate increases to help cover the cost of, you know, solid waste disposal in the city. We'll talk about the possibility of implementing other revenue streams and increasing existing streams each year as well. This includes taking a look at our property tax rate each year and make sure we continue to analyze our current spending and anticipated spending and growth. More and better streamlining in the future will be necessary to keep up with the continued growth of the city. Any questions?
You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
And really want to point out, you know, Erin started as our budget director, correct?
Yes.
Roughly about three or four months ago?
Yes, sir.
And in all the years that I've been here, I think this is one of the first mid-year budget presentations like this that we've ever really received to let us see exactly... I mean, we've gotten reports back before, but this is really good to be able to let us gauge on where things are and how things are going. So appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, so Craig, piggybacking off of that, one of our options that we had in the presentation is the hotel occupancy tax.
All right, I think the bottom line on our budget review is that we still need to be diligent or vigilant, doing too many things at once. Vigilant on our expenditures, and we're going to continue to do that. We do have some significant expenditures that we know that we're faced with coming up. A couple of different things, and we'll talk in February. I'd like to talk about our pension and our pension costs and some of the things that we're looking at there. We've been... We were very careful on our... What we did with salaries and we're very hard to stay within the budget the council gave us. It does have a larger impact when we talk about pensions and such. So we want to make sure the council has a clear picture of that. One of the things that we wanted to look at is the hotel motel tax that we assess. Here's a survey of some of the cities around and the counties around and what's being assessed there. We have the ability here in Murfreesboro to increase to the statutory maximum of 5%. We're at 2 and 1/2 right now. We've been at 2 and 1/2 since '93. So it's been many, many years. Some of the others... The county increased theirs... Somebody told me this morning, and I forgot, but they increased it a couple of years ago, I think. Keep leaning, I'm sorry. A couple of years ago, they've increased their sales tax, and we have the ability to also increase. You'll see here that some cities and counties do combine their sales tax that would bring it very close to what we're proposing for our sales tax increase. Right now, as Erin said, we bring in about 1.7. We're on track. Bill and I just looked it up. We're about on track exactly to do the 1.7 again this year. We allocate a portion of that. 30% of it goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And then we take a portion that goes back to Stones River Trail Maintenance. It goes into the general fund. Actually, we supplement the trail maintenance out of the general fund. So the 10% helps offset that. And then the rest of the money goes to the general fund. Our proposal would be to increase to the statutory maximum 5% or double it, which would increase annual revenue to 3.2. Holding the Convention and Visitors Bureau's allocation static would then make it 15% of that amount. They would get the same amount. Same with the trails maintenance, which is a little... It doesn't really matter. As I said, we supplement that maintenance anyway. And the rest of it would go to general fund. What the proposal would be to use those proceeds to promote tourism, continue to promote tourism, and to secure economic development opportunities that would promote tourism and employment opportunities as well. So with that, our next steps, if council's agreeable, we put it on for council consideration next Thursday. Does require 2/3 votes of council, so we'll do 2/3 votes of council. If council approves it, come back for second read on the 24th. We suggest it would be implemented March 1. That would give the hotels a chance to update their systems and do whatever they need to do to be able to implement that tax rate. And this year, that would generate about $550,000, $560,000 worth of revenue. Any questions on that?
Does this have to go to the state?
It does not.
Okay.
Adam looked into that, and it doesn't. Yes, ma'am.
When I came on the council in 2010, you know, I was looking at our revenue and everything and the growth of the city, which has really grown a lot faster since then. And I suggested that we possibly increase taxes like a half a percentage for the next four years. In my second term, I made that same suggestion. This term, I think we are really at crunch time. I think we are right there on the edge where we, you know, we can't continue to grow, add employees, add amenities, and not go on our record, which is excellent, of not increasing taxes at least 24 years. With numbers I'm seeing today and some of the things we're talking about... With numbers I'm seeing today and some of the things we're talking about in the future, it looks like to me in this term, we're not going to have a choice but to increase taxes. Do you agree with that? You think we can still maintain even with the hotel motel increase? I personally, and I'm not a number cruncher guru at all, but I don't see us going the next four years without increasing taxes. What do you think?
Well, when you talk about increasing taxes, I take it you're talking about property taxes?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's okay. I think the best thing to do would be to analyze that at the end of the year to see where we're at, just to make sure. I think your premise is not wrong. It's been 20 some odd years before this property tax has been increased. Our recommendation would be to review that annually and review it very carefully. I think it's probably best for a discussion on the budget when we have a more fuller picture of what our budget looks like towards the end of the year and any other things that may occur during that period of time between now and then, what other expenses we would have or what other revenue sources that might come in, and take a careful look at that. It always is something I think that's worthy of review and then of course council would decide whether they felt like that was necessary to do it. But we are, I think the basic, and correct me if I'm wrong, premise is that we are running very close expenditures and revenues. Actually, we're running above expenditures over revenues and we have for several years and we've had one-time money coming in that masked that for a long period of time. Basically, property sales, a lot of that out of Gateway, and we're running out of property. We don't have any more property over there. So we're not able to do that for a period of time and that's given council the ability not to have to look at that very hard and I think we're at the end of that process and we need to probably annually take a real hard look at what we need to do either on the expense side or on the revenue side. Those are the only two choices you really have.
Yeah, God has been very good to our city. I mean, we're very blessed, but I can see us right here on the verge of Robin Peter to pay Paul just to keep up with day-to-day things we need to keep up with. So I just wanted to.
It's, oh, I didn't know if you had something.
And I just didn't want us to reach the point where we may, we may not, here again, we're a very blessed city, to where when we do come to the point where we do have to increase taxes, it won't be so astronomical that it's going to kill people financially.
Right, right. I think it's part of the process, we need to look at our revenue and how it's structured as well, and one of the ways to do that is on utilities and deciding what really belongs from a revenue source into a fee structure as opposed to a property tax structure, and we're doing that on solid waste. The other thing, and this is a lead-in to the next segment, I'll let the mayor call it in a second, but the lead-in would be the impact that development has on our community, on roadways, on schools, parks, on other attributes. We do very well, thanks to Darren's hard work, make sure that our water and sewer impact, the impact of the water and sewer system is covered with expenses, but we don't on the other ones right now through a development impact fee. And so we want to bring back to council the information that's necessary for them, for you all to consider a development impact fee. And to that end, we've asked Randy Caldwell, Reagan Smith to do a survey of what's out there right now. This isn't a study, but this is a survey of what's going on. The next step, council's amenable to it, would be to incur the cost of actually doing a study to figure out what that amount would be and how it would be related to the services that would be provided.
Before we move on to development impact fee, does anyone have any question on hotel motel occupancy? I just want to make one comment. You know, I'm not going to get into decisions that were made a couple of years ago with the county. I mean, I think we were very clear from our standpoint that, you know, the majority of the hotel motels that are taxed are all in municipal areas and, you know, at the time, there was a decision made for that to go for the county to fire services, which, you know, my argument back to the county was taxing hotel motels for fire service is really a double tax to those entities because they're already paying for fire service through their county or through their city taxes. So, you know, having a hotel motel tax for someone paying for fire service outside of the incorporated areas, that is not what the premise of the hotel motel tax is for. It's for economic development, tourism. So I want to make sure that if we make this decision, that we go ahead and identify or even talk about. I mean, I think we clearly can say that parks and recs, you look at the number of events that we have in our parks and rec areas and the number of hotel rooms that are booked, even just out at Siegel Park as it is right now. That clearly helps, but, you know, I want to be able to make sure that as we talk to stakeholders, because I'm sure that, you know, by talking about this, that, you know, if, for instance, a soccer facility that the projected revenue for 22,000 room nights a year, that helps the hotel motel industry. So in turn, you know, those are the type of things I think that it helps the overall group. So if we've got that planned, then that sort of makes sense.
Yeah, and we'll bring some of that back with the ordinance itself, but we've talked to, has been widely publicized and the council knows the TSSA and they've just made a decision to relocate their headquarters here and their tournaments into Richard Siegel with us doing some enhancement to that field. So some of this money would be allocated there and talked about 20,000, 22,000 room nights increase per year. So that's a significant increase in the room nights. That alone can be one source of the money, the Greenway Trails and those and the tourism that that can bring in and the amenity that that offers to the community. We do supplement that out of the general fund and some of the funds can be used for those. And then the university is doing quite a bit that could increase tourism as well with their development plans out there. Their intent to use Murphy Center and put that back into concert use, which would increase room nights and hotel and visitors into our community as well. So all of those things are certainly projects that would be available for the funds to be used for directly related to tourism.
Okay.
I've got just a couple of questions.
Sure.
One, I guess, just kind of thinking through everything you're saying, if we know we're going to have, we don't, we haven't identified exactly what the shortfall will be from a revenue standpoint because we don't have the December numbers on the sales tax. Is it wise for us to say we're going to specifically allocate all these dollars to tourism and to economic development, knowing we've got a budget shortfall in front of us? Because we're taking that additional revenue source and we're carving out and putting it aside, which is not going to address that issue no matter, and we don't know exactly what the issue is at this point. But the other question, I guess, to piggyback on that, we also know, not to confuse the issue, but, you know, we've got a $5 trash fee that we're talking about, which I support and I think makes a lot of sense, but we're not allocating that specifically to solid waste as we talk about it being an enterprise, right? Like we have water and sewer and electricity. So we're taking some of these revenue sources and we're picking and choosing where we put them. Some we're dumping in the general fund, which are supposed to be enterprise and some we're not. So help me understand that.
Right, well, with respect, we'll start with the hotel motel tax and having, going to the general fund. The things that I talked about really will eat up the rest of the money, the supplementation for the trails that we supplement into the trails, the TSSA project for the next probably 10 years, and the debt or however we incur that would be, would be using up pretty much that 1.7 that alone. And if we allocate some towards whatever we can do to improve the area around the university and assist them with the plans that they have, which would be, I think, a big tourism draw for us, all of those, like I said, use up that money very, very quickly. So I think all of that would go into there. Now, the solid waste, you're right, at some point in time, we need to get to solid waste being an enterprise fund. Right now, you know, with $5, our recovery is more along the lines of $12. So we could set up an enterprise funds, but all we would be doing is shifting a whole bunch of money over into an enterprise fund to supplement that until we get much closer to that 12 or to that 12 or given what we're facing with Middle Point landfill, maybe 17 or 18 until we get to those kind of numbers. It just becomes an accounting exercise that really doesn't get us anywhere because it can't self-support it, it can't get close to self-supporting.
I understand.
So that's the reason why we'd be using general fund money.
I think attached to his questionnaire, you know, what is outlined on our slide here as far as how we have the allocation, 30%, 10%, and 60% in general, would we, would the idea be with the new proposal, you know, as far as whatever you guys bring back to us, where there'll, will there still be a big number that just says general fund and we just kind of know that we're using that for this, 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 and this, or it's a shell, you know, it's just a matter of, well, because we got that extra revenue, now we can not use some of the other revenue to go towards something else? Or are we going to make it more specific? I think, I think that might be a way, part of what you're asking.
I think right, right now.
We can certainly.
Right now, we've got the one, we've got 1.7 that roughly comes in and that goes straight to the general fund. There's no.
Well, 30% goes to CVB.
Well, no.
10%.
Yeah, 30% goes to CVB, 10% goes to the trail, but our net out of all of that is 1.7 a year. So it's actually, that 1.7 is a netted out number.
That's higher 60%.
Yes, yeah. So what we can do and what we really talked about is that we've been able, we should be able to have a baseline on what our hotel motel tax has been and currently will be, and then now be able to see if that's raised, what that additional is every year, and then be able to internally allocate, okay, you know, because the issue is that.
Well, so are we still going to just say general fund or are we going to break it down more specifically than that, I guess is my question.
Probably still leave it in the general fund, but let me share on the money we receive already. In addition to the trail, in addition to the chamber, we also have that page in our outside agencies and there's a section called tourism. So those dollars, we've always considered part of the hotel motel tax. And before we envelop the recreation fund into the general fund, the rest of it went to recreation. And so recreation's budget is much more than we receive in hotel motel tax. So that's, they have a lot of things that bring in groups like 4th of July, you know, people come in for all kinds of their events, plus the other events that we help with like Uncle Dave making days and things like that. So we can do whatever you want to do with it, but I think it'll be more just keeping up with how we think we've spent it annually, because that may change each year, what projects you want to dedicate it towards.
Right, and if we do budget preparation, we can budget it out and show that a little more distinctly if that's council's desire.
I'm not advocating either way frankly. I was just curious as to how you're planning to, I mean, to get it back to us, so I just sort of know, I mean, you know, there's a little bit of risk in just putting it all to the general fund, basically. You know, I mean, there's a little bit of risk in that as far as we say this is going here and we end up spending the money anyway.
Right.
On something else.
Yeah.
And so there's a little bit of risk to that, but we, you know, we got to be, I think, I think your point is try to be consistent with whatever it is that we're doing and if we, you know, look, if general fund is the best way to do it for now, from an accounting perspective, I think it's.
Yeah, we can, but we can earmark it in the budget process for what it's being used for and that would show how it's, where the money's flowing to.
Yeah, I mean, if this happens, I think it'd be good every year along with our presentation to really go through, and we get charts showing where our hotel motel revenue has come in.
Yeah.
But it would be good to be able, if we say, okay, it's either XYZ facility, we could show sort of to what Rick was saying, you're not bringing in, you know, so if that number goes down, say the economy drops down and our number goes down to 30 or 40% of what we were anticipating, then we can clearly see, well, here's what your expenditures that you brought on based on this assumption, but here's what your revenue is. And that way we could see where that spread is.
Right.
Could I ask a question too, and see if I understood this properly? Is the 1.7 our net from the hotel motel tax after we paid the 30%?
After the 30 and 10. Yeah, the number we looked at just a few minutes ago is the net to the general.
1.7 is the 60%. Is that correct?
Okay, that's what I want to make sure, because that's critical. Then the addition.
Yeah, it's total.
Okay, so.
1.7 is what we get before we do allocation.
So what is the net to us then for the general fund?
They're not saying that name.
So Erin. 60% of.
It'd be about a million. It'd be about a million, billion, twenty.
So what's our, is in the budget, okay. Was that, is that what is in our budget?
It's the 60%. Well, we budget, we budget 30%.
There it is right there. Okay, so we're, so that's, you know, it's not the net number then, it's. Well, and the other question is, when we increase the hotel motel tax, are we agreeing to the additional percentage, the same percentages on the.
Look at the next slide. I actually had to go.
Yeah, the next slide is part of where I was getting to, yeah.
The next slide, the percentages are cut in half, Bill.
So you would see us getting 80% of the general, into the general fund at that point?
Something.
And Paul is very happy with that.
So we actually go from, we go from 1 million to 2 and 1/2 million.
Yeah, the allocations go from 30% to the chamber to 15% to the chamber.
Correct.
Stones River is 10%. It's going to 5%.
Our number.
Which increases our number.
It increases us from 1 million to 2 and 1/2 is the.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, our net goes to 2 and 1/2 million.
Right.
But the amount that you raise it to, we don't have anything to take out of that to share.
Right, it's just all, it's all, it's all net to us.
For the city to use.
Yeah, right.
It's like a lot of money, take a look at 170 million dollar budget.
So one thing I just want to clarify, and I just, just as a point of mind, understand, part of what we're trying to work through is we think we've got a revenue shortfall. We've identified an opportunity to create additional stream of revenue to come in and I'm all about investing in our community to create future revenue, but we've got a revenue shortfall for this year. We think we're going to have a revenue shortfall for next year and we're talking about allocating these dollars specifically for investment in tourism and those types of things when we see we're facing a shortfall. So that's all I want to say.
But aren't we tied on the hotel motel tax that that is technically supposed to go to recreation and tourism?
From statutory?
I mean, not recreation, but really supposed to go towards tourism. I mean, that was the whole idea of this legislature's approving the hotel motel tax to begin with was increase tourism. And so if that's the case, then, and of course, we use recreation to stimulate tourism, so there's a direct relationship there. But it's not something we could go and grab and say, okay, we're going to help pay off part of our solid waste situation or something like that.
The statute allowed the county to do what they did, so I mean.
I think, I think.
I think there are some cities and some counties that by state law are statutorily required to spend it on tourism, but I, subject to further research, I don't think those provisions apply to Rutherford County or the city of Murphy'sboro.
Okay.
How about, how about the idea, and this is, I think, along with Ronnie's thought process here, but, and we're, remember the workshop is a brainstorming session, right? This isn't, you know, I'm just trying to think, say this before I completely think through it and study it, but, you know, the idea that we say, okay, this, these earmarks can all be fine and good unless there's a shortfall, that the, you know, because it's part of the general, because it is technically coming in the general fund. You know, I think, like I said, the risk is, and what I think he's outlining is that we earmark these things to go somewhere, but we lose revenue over here. We're spending money we don't have, is what it boils down to. Well, if we've got these revenue sources coming in, that, you know, if the ordinance, if this is going to be a resolution or an ordinance, whatever, how that works legally, that, you know, we could say, yeah, these earmarks is exactly what we want to do with this money, so long as we're not in a budget deficit or shortfall. And at that point, it goes towards the, you know, goes straight to the budget to help make sure we're, I mean, our first goal up there was balanced budget. And so, I know, again, brainstorming here is something to think about, but.
Yeah, we can take a look at this. I'll be honest with you, the amount that it's going to raise and what it will be used for and what we have now and commitments and what we need, it will be used up immediately and it will be used. And it will be used to offset, I mean, we have T S, T, T S S A, we have the, the project on there, but, you know, we do T double S double A is a big tourism generator, and our tournaments that we bring in there, and just to keep up with that alone is, and, and using general fund money for that is, can be offset with some of this. So, if we were talking about ten million.
Yeah.
I'd have a concern, and, and look at that really hard. We're talking about, you know, another one point.
Two and a half million.
And not.
I mean, altogether, above of what we get right now, it's point oh oh eight percent. So, it's.
Of our budget?
Of our total revenue that's coming in. So, it's not even, it's not even a percent.
Yeah, so, it, it will be, it'll be used, it'll be used for tourism-related things, but it would be offsetting a lot of the costs that we incur right now to maintain those.
Yeah, and, and as, as we go deeper into what seems to be an economic slowdown, I think the worst thing we could possibly do is increase taxes on our, our property owners. I, I was opposed to it last year, I'm opposed to it this year, and I'll be opposed to it next year, a property tax increase. I mean, that just flat out, no, I'm not gonna support a property tax increase. But there are revenue streams that we have available to us, and, and I think we're gonna get off on that with the developmental impact. But the, this one point two percent, one point two million, which may be two point five million, if, if the, it, that's not the goose that laid the golden egg. I mean, on a hundred and seventy million dollar a year annual budget, two or three million dollars is not going to change anything as far as not having enough revenue. I think, at least from my perspective, is we'll have to look at spending at some point and say, you know, which services can we afford to provide, and which services can't we? Obviously, we're already going that direction with the fee-based solid waste, and, and I think that's a good thing, because, I mean, you, you're paying for what you get, and, and the perception has always been that trash is free, and trash is not free. Well, no, picking up trash is not free, those trucks don't run on air, and, and those trucks aren't free. So, it, but, but most importantly, we have to look at every available revenue stream that we have available to us, and whether it be paying for the use of parks, whether it be paying for having your trash picked up, whether it be any, any of the fluffery, I think, of, of avenues that we have available to us that can generate revenue. We need to look at every one of those and make sure that we're increasing our revenue and not increasing our expenditures at the same time, so.
Yeah, I think, I think you're, you're exactly right, and that's what, that's what we want to continue to look at. I mean, e- every dollar is important to us, and realistically, it becomes a question of how much process do you put into the dollar? And that's why when we talk about a million too, and it's not, the big concern is that we don't necessarily need to layer in a huge amount of process, although every one, there's a million times a concern over that million dollars. I think we can, we can handle it pretty well using it the way we are now, collecting it the way we are now.
All right, let's move to your development impact fee survey.
Uh, I'll turn it over to Mr. Caldwell, who'll run through our survey.
Before we switch up to that completely, would you, would you tell, what, what is our process on this and potentially on this, but for, for this, where do we go from here as far as?
On the hotel tax?
Yeah.
Uh, we will, we have a draft ordinance that we'll finish and get in front of council next Thursday to be voted on, and of course, we'll take two readings, and then after that.
We'll discuss.
Anything you want.
All of these things.
Sure.
And, and, and before we get too far away from that, I know we were talking about the chamber just a second ago, and I think Paul will probably hear this, but the, the amount of money that we're giving to the chamber, I, I wish that we would get more reporting back to us telling us the number of jobs that we brought to Murfreesboro, what the average income of those jobs pays, and give us more information as to what we're getting for the money that we're spending out to the chamber. I'm not saying we're spending too much for, for the chamber, but I just, I personally would like more information coming back to us in a presentation-type form that would tell us why we're paying that amount, and at some point, maybe it shouldn't be a percentage, maybe it should be a rewarded number for some calculation that we could come up with that would reward them for if they have a banner year and bring in more jobs than what they expected to, that paid a X amount of salary. It, it can't be solely based on the number of jobs, it has to be somehow tied to what those jobs pay.
Quality.
But, but, but when you bring jobs into the city of Murfreesboro that allows our students to leave college and high school and go into those jobs, that is a value that brings to the quality of life that was referred to earlier. I think that's very important, so I'm not trying to cut their budget, I'm saying there's opportunity here that they may be able to increase their percentage if they can do that. And so, you know, there's.
And we, we need to have an opportunity to set some of those expectations too.
I agree.
I mean, you know, the, the council, since I've been here for over four and a half years, I don't remember ever the council as a whole having any sort of a, an opportunity to say, this is what we expect, you know, the money just comes out of the, comes out of the kitty. And then, we run into this, well, you know, we're not even getting reports back on what's happening, or, but, but again, you know, we haven't really said anything because we really haven't had the opportunity. So, I guess I'll just ask that of you, is that coordinate with, with the chamber and their leadership, and just kind of say, hey, look, maybe, maybe we should be trying to say, this is what, if we're gonna be given hundreds of thousands of dollars, it is, by the time you factor in everything, you know, these are the things that we think are important for our, the longevity and the, the, whatever reasons we think's quality of life for our city, these are the goals. You know, and we've all talked about it separately on some occasion, but, you know, what the mix of jobs looks like, you know, are we getting enough of this type, are we getting enough of this type? You know, so those kinds of things will be important for us to be able to relay to them, and then that might start the process of, I don't know, I'll back with the road you're going down and say, you know, look, if we get, if we say this is our goal and there's more, well, maybe that percentage right there number can go up, because it will benefit the city.
Right.
Literally, mathematically, so.
But truly, it's, it's as important for the, for us to set a goal of white collar versus blue collar jobs as it is to just set a number of jobs, or to set even a price point on what jobs pay. So, I, I think there's, there's, there's quite a bit of study that needs to go into proposal of what it is we expect, but I do think that there's potential for, and, and when I say jobs in Murfreesboro, I'm not neglecting the fact that a lot of people in Murfreesboro work in Smyrna and Laverne and places like that. But, let's face it, we're, we're here to represent Murfreesboro, and, and, and we want jobs coming into our city, and, and dang it, you know, if Interstate twenty-four is too crowded every day because people are leaving Murfreesboro to go work in Nashville at state jobs, at some point, we need to start putting pressure on our legislators to say, bring some of those state jobs to Murfreesboro, because we have the talent to do those jobs. The only thing is, we're cluttering our interstate because we've got them driving from Murfreesboro to Nashville every day. Why do that? Why have that carbon footprint? Why have that waste of fuel? Why have that using of petroleum products when we don't need to do that, if they would just relocate the jobs here? And it's not, we don't, you know, we, we don't live in the world where we print everything out on a piece of paper and carry it to the office down the hall anymore. We, we live in a world that has changed, and, and with the technology and the, the internet, the world got smaller, and, and so, we now have the ability for a, a business in Murfreesboro to communicate with Nashville as if it's next door. So, I, I, I think there's an opportunity here for us to even start looking at the government and saying, why aren't we getting more government facilities in Murfreesboro and more opportunities for employment without having to drive to Nashville for it? So, I'm done.
Well, Mr. Latour and I are getting together this week, so we can certainly talk over these issues and see where we can go. Absolutely.
One last point to address Mr. Smotherman's question earlier, and to piggyback on this last conversation, is that the general statute authorizing the city to impose the, the hotel occupancy tax provides that the proceeds from, received by the municipality from the tax shall be designated and used for purposes authorized in the ordinance levying, levying the tax. So, you can't, if there, you can specify that in the ordinance, what you want to do. My, I think the default is, is if you, if you don't specify, it goes into the general fund. What I don't know, and it'd be, what I could go back and look at, is when the tax was first imposed, whether the ordinance that imposed that said X percent was going to go to Chamber of Commerce.
And that's, that, that I think is, is a good point, because my understanding is in, in the last year or two, that has changed. So, what we could do with our first two and a half percent may be different than what we can do with our second two and a half percent that we've acquired, because we, we may, we may get it under two different directions of, you can take this percentage from this two and a half percent, but the original two and a half percent is dedicated, and, and I think that's how the county kind of worked around it.
Yep.
Good, well, appreciate, appreciate being here, following up. Basically, just to kind of go over, we were basically charged with what I would call a data collection exercise, trying to collect data on impact fees in the surrounding municipalities around Murfreesboro, and hopefully put that in a kind of a logical format that's kind of easy to compare the different communities of how they compared each other on what they're charging, and how those fees are assessed. So, we've taken all that data, kind of put it in some chart formats for you so that you can see how that is done. I'll kind of walk through each impact fee that we were kind of focused on, and, and kind of walk you through on how those are assessed. Some things to mention, this is not to make any recommendations, it's just purely a data collection exercise that we went through so that you can see that and see what other communities are doing. We also did not compare other development fees that are usually assessed by other communities, such as tap fees, review fees, and things like that, that are, you know, that are basically charged from different utility districts or that. So, we did not go through that exercise as part of that. Something else that you might want to consider as you look through this, and again, you'll see that there's a zero on Murfreesboro, you know, on, on these charts that I'll go over there, and probably many of you are aware, there is a fifteen hundred dollar per unit fee that's assessed by the county, you know, on residential development, so that's something to keep in, in mind. My understanding, that is not earmarked towards road, schools, or parking wrecks, it goes basically into their general fund, and I think how that is typically assessed is that when a plat is recorded, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars at that time, and then when somebody comes in for a building permit, there's another seven hundred and fifty dollars on top of that. So, kind of keep that, that's something I think to keep in mind in the future, you know, as you look at this, and, you know, decide on what the next steps you want to take, and certainly can be incorporated as part of further study with this. You know, when we look at the areas we want to cover, you kind of see a list of communities that we started with as far as looking at that. Not all these communities had impact fees, so there were, there were, although a good majority of them did, so that's where we started out as, as part of this process. And we were specifically charged with looking at impact fees associated with roads, schools, parks, and recreation, and public safety, many of the things that you've been talking about here this afternoon. Start with road impact fees. Obviously, everybody understands the, the impacts that that has on new development, on the transportation network, what we have found during that study, that, again, fees are assessed on residential, retail, and commercial differently as part of that. Usually, retail and commercial carries the highest burden for that, as we looked at these different communities. In residential, single-family carried a little bit more weight than multifamily, as far as how much they were charged with the impact fee. And you'll see, you also see some differences in the types of retail and commercial uses, so those are typically assessed differently as well. And kind of what we found out is that there's kind of a high turn, with high turnover of developments, such as fast food, those you will see in the chart, those are typically charged a higher impact fee for whatever reason, as, as part of that, and you see that pretty consistent through the communities that we, that we looked at. Just looking at the residential impact fees, and again, these are ranges of fees per units, and again, what we found, you'll see Brettwood, Franklin, Laverne, Smyrna, and Spring Hill are the communities we found that consistently charge these, these fees. And again, what you will see in each of these, and again, we tried to put some earmarks to the side of how much, you know, there's the range there, basically, that you see, the low range, for example, in Franklin, from twenty-three thirty-eight up to forty-nine per, forty-nine eleven per unit. Again, you'll see the hotel rooms down there that are actually assessed a fee, a little bit higher range on the multifamily, and then the largest one that's getting impacted is, is single family. So, obviously, you see Franklin is probably the biggest, and that's, that's to be expected, I think, with, and it's been pretty consistent over the years that I've been doing what I do over the years. They've always had some significant impact fees as, as part of new development in, in their community. You can see Smyrna's up there, you know, pretty good, too. And the one thing I think that you see within the communities you're looking at, obviously, we're in the fastest growth area of, of the country, and in a lot of places, and these are some of the fastest-growing communities in middle Tennessee. So, as a result, you're, you're seeing that they're, that they're charging something for that. Laverne and Spring Hill, I think you'll see a consistent lower amount as we go through this exercise, but that gives you a little bit of idea on the residential fees associated with that. Again, when you go to commercial, again, you'll see those fees jump up, you know, much higher than the single family, as I identified previously, and again, you see where we tried to identify the different rates associated with the different types of, of uses, and again, you can see where the fast food is, is at the top of that, you know, fee on there, and then that works down to where general retail is typically the lower one. The only thing that may differ a little bit is formal restaurant versus fast food, it seems like that formal restaurant kind of falls somewhere in the middle or down, down to the, to the lower edge of that. Any questions related to road impact fees before I go on? Again, school impact fees, obviously, you know, again, you know, I know that a lot of the residents here go to county schools, but the city does have, does have a school system at, at the end of the day. Again, the municipalities are doing this to offset the cost for increased enrollment that comes with the residential growth. Again, the fees are typically based on, you know, a little bit different than a per-unit basis. What we found with the impact fees on schools, it's based on a square footage of dwelling units, so a little different methodology as far as how that is approached from the different municipalities. And then retail and commercial are typically exempt from that, so there, there is no fee, obviously, because they typically don't have a fee, you know, an impact on the school system. And if you go to the report that we actually prepared for this, and just, if you get a chance to dive in that, and you get a copy of that, we have how this is all assessed from each community as an appendix, you know, to this, so you can kind of review that further as, as you look at it. Again, here you'll start to see the fees associated with the, with the residential component, and again, you'll see the range based on the square footage of the house, the lower the square footage, the impact fee, the higher the square footage, you know, obviously, the larger the square footage, the higher the impact fee on that goes. So, you can see that's fairly significant with Brettwood, Franklin, and Spring Hill in particular. Laverne, Smyrna does not have one. I don't know if that has to do with, again, with the fact that the, it may be seen it's getting by the county, you know, that fee's being collected through the county, so that's probably why. So, again, you can see the, the impact that that has on Williamson County, you know, or joining a community, and probably our most competitive community that we're dealing with here for Rutherford County. Parking recreation impact fees, again, what we have seen is most of that does not go towards current operations, but more towards futures, such as fishing ponds and, you know, shooting ranges and, and things like that.
I just don't know how to catch goldfish.
So, it's for future capital improvements. Again, these are typically assessed on a per-dwelling unit, you know, for the residential, and again, you'll see that retail and commercial developments are typically exempt from that when you compare the, the different communities. And again, what you'll see here is that Brettwood and Spring Hill do not assess a fee on that. Franklin obviously has the highest one, but you do see the two other communities in Rutherford County that are assessing a fee for that, and again, those are per-dwelling unit fees on, on that. Public safety impact fees, I think when you go to the chart, there's really, there's not many communities that do, do charge a fee on that. Again, this is to ensure that developments do not place too much pressure and stretch their police and fire departments. Again, they're assessed on residential and commercial retail differently. The retail, commercial is obviously, is typically much. Uh, the retail, commercial is obviously is typically much higher than, than the residential. And then the residential is typically based on, uh, basically the single family has the higher, uh, higher fee associated with the multifamily. Uh, and again, these are assessed per dwelling unit. Retail and commercial, the way they assess that typically, what we've seen is on a per thousand square foot of the commercial use. I don't think there's a differentiation between the types of uses, it's just based on the total, total square footage. And again, what you see here is Laverne and Smyrna are the only ones that are right now charging a fee, uh, towards that. And obviously Smyrna has a little higher, much higher range than, than what Laverne does right now. Uh, if you do go into the report, if you dive into that, we do have actually a chart that identifies how many, how much fees were actually generated by these different communities as a result of these fees. So that's, uh, in your package is in the report as well so that you can kind of see a, a total impact that that would have on your budget at the end of the year for, you know, some comparable, um, communities. And again, here, again, I, I missed this, you basically got the retail, commercial. And again, you'll see where Laverne and Smyrna, you know, fall on that, so.
Thanks Randy. We didn't, I don't think we got the, the-
The final report?
Yeah.
Okay. We can get that, it's still in draft form and I think we want to get some feedback from everybody today and then we can get that to you.
Okay.
Yeah. So again, when you dive into that, that will have a recap of what those, what, you know, how much the communities benefited from that. And it will have all the charts and the appendixes of, of, you know, much more specifics relative to what each community is assessing and how much of all that.
Are they consistent in, when you do a, an impact, are they for schools or for roads? Are they consistent in how they determine the parameters of the area that they're considering? How much, how do they determine the cost of the roads and the cost of the schools and its impact on an area? Is it, is it pretty consistent or?
Uh, well, I think you kind of see it's a little bit all over the board. I think it's depending on how much the-
Don't you have to determine an amount?
You, you, you do. And here, this is, um, and as I said before, this is really just the survey of what's going on out there. The next step, uh, is to get into the study. And what we have to do is we have to create a, a nexus between what fee and the cost of that fee, you know, what level it's at. Um, and, and the type of development that we're assessing. And so that's, that's a requirement. So that's really the next step from, from here. I think, are you at the end of your?
Yeah.
Yeah. So from, from the next step standpoint, what we really would ask councils is if it is a concept, the council wants to, us to go further and undertake an impact fee study. So we can determine what amounts would be and then what is, what they would result in.
My question was if these other, these comparable, uh, cities are, are they consistent or is it just all over the board?
Well, we just haven't got into the level of detail again.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
This was basically a data collection exercise at this point.
Yeah. And they would, they would have to legally to be able to assess it, they have to go through the same process. So, um,
Founded by the state?
Um, I, I believe our state statutes on impact fees require, most state statutes require you to, to create the legal nexus between the fee before you can assess it. And, um, that was, let's say 10 or 15 years ago, they went to that. So when you talk about the county and their fee and what they assess now, this is all done before that. So there probably isn't a study on county. It was probably just an amount that they thought would be good to slap onto properties and structures. So I, I'm speculating. I don't know that for sure, but I'm speculating because it's been around for a while, I understand. But our next step would be really to, to hire consultants to, to dig in, to get to, to the number. And each community would have had to have done the same to come up with their numbers. And so there would be some consistency, but there would be likely a lot of variability in, in what, what they're planning to do with their roadways or planning to do with their schools and things like that. So if, if council is amenable for us to expend the funds to hire consultants to, to look at development impact fees and what we need to assess, we'll, we'll go forward and do that.
How much money?
Yeah, we'll have to do a study that this-
I just said, don't say that out loud.
We'll get, we'll get, uh-
On the record.
We will gather proposals and, um, I'm not going to put Randy on the spot to ask.
I forget what that developer was who came that wanted to negotiate in front of the city council, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't think we would ever do that. But Randy, what will you do this study for?
I have no idea. I'll be honest with you. I, I, you know, I would probably have to bring in some other help with our firm if we did that. Just, uh, I want to make sure, you know, we get it done right, you know, for you. So it'll be a team effort that we'll probably bring another party in to, to team with to get that done if we're-
And we, and we'll have to, we'll have to do some scoping too as to what we want them to study. Do you want them to study roads and schools, parks, police, um, and so some of that'll-
When you say no idea, I mean, are we talking zero to a hundred, 100 to 500, 500 to a million?
Literally do not. No, I wish, no, no, I don't think you're-
Free, so, so let's do this.
Talking under a hu- under-
Say it free Randy.
Pardon me?
Did you say free?
No, I didn't say that. You guys are putting me on the spot here.
You think it's less than a hundred?
Yes.
Comfortable.
Yes, yes.
All right, so. Well, I mean, I just, it's hard to ask us, are we okay with spending the money without having some range?
Well, we'd, we'd bring proposals back that you'd see before we expend the funds. Yeah.
And again, you can always kind of, you know, craft the scope to what you're looking for as well.
Right, yeah.
So that's, you know, a big part of it as well.
It's really the concept now. If the, if the council's comfortable with the concept, then we'll go and get proposals and then we'll bring it, council-
Yeah, and I think it would be good as we do this. Williamson County enacted, I think it was a year ago, March. It's $11,210 for anything over 3,200 square feet, which in Williamson County is basically everything. So you're paying $11,210 per square foot. I mean, $11,210 total plus $2 per heated and cooled square footage. Or anything that could ever possibly be heated and cooled. So it ends up being like 20, you know, 25 grand a house is what you end up paying for.
How did you know before we did?
Hey, hey, so real quickly, since this is the last thing we're going to talk about, do we have any other business?
Okay. We went off. Uh, a couple of things on other, if somebody, if somebody hits a pipe downstairs in the garage, it, it sets it off. So it's probably, probably what happened, but-
Somebody would come, oh, yes.
Just, just real quickly, we don't have any, but another business, uh, real quickly, um, um, hang on, let me get to my- We're good? All right. So somebody must've hit something downstairs or they're working. Oh, you know what? They're, they're working on the fire system in our office and that's probably what set it off. Um, February workshop, uh, what we wanted to do is to come back and talk about pension and, as I said, pension and the impact. Some current decisions are made on that. Uh, so we want to get council a good, a good view of that. Um, would like to get council together and I'll be surveying for dates and such to do a council retreat. Uh, not very far, but you know, someplace where we can get away to talk about. Uh, what I'd like to do, uh, is to have it be a guided retreat, so to speak. Someone that has some experience to give us and some direction on the discussion so that we can make it as meaningful as possible and come out with something from, uh, council that will help us both from budgeting and, and planning our, um, activities over the next year. So, um, I'll probably be bringing forward a proposal on that, um, and gathering up some dates. Uh, last thing, um, workshops, uh, if council is amenable to keep doing them, if it's a positive experience, um, we're going to buy a new table to do them. Um, this table is actually falling apart. It's not made to move. We keep moving it. Um, we've, we are about to order, uh, uh, some tables that are, um, in segments so that they can be put away a lot easier. It'll give us a little more room. It'd be kind of a U-shaped, um, here. But, uh, so that'll, that'll be coming quickly and we can kind of continue to do it down here.
February date that you had on the work-
Uh, second, be the second February, uh, the second-
Fourteenth?
Uh, where's February, the, the 14th? It'd be the 14th. The second Wednesday. Is that a Wednesday or Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
13th.
Is it not an 13th?
February 13th. Be the next workshop.
Let me ask you a question. Trying to save us some money here. Why don't we just use that table right there?
That semi round table that, well, we were trying to get a little, a little, a little spacing, a little comfort and a little flexibility. So what we looked at is a table that would allow us to-
I know you don't want to raise property taxes.
To use it, to use it, yeah, it's, it, they're similar to what they have at the, uh, police and the community room over there. So they're not very expensive tables. They're not, they're not like this. This is not made to move. But we can use them for a lot of different things. It is, and some of our tables need to be replaced. So, multiple purposes.
I love the workshops. I don't necessarily like somebody sitting right here behind me and my back turned to them from a security standpoint. I think that's not a good idea. And I think it would be better if we were to move into that area and continue to have some type of in the round seating here that's available to allow us to work across the desk from each other. But I, I really think, I was, I was being facetious in a certain extent. But I think, I think it would be a good idea to get this table in a, in a theoretically safer position.
We need to, uh, cancel our order and get a different configuration. We can do that. I mean, it's, it's what everybody would like to do.
Yeah, and I just, if, if you have a security team, if we did a security study, I don't think they would tell us to sit like we're sitting right here. And so, uh, I just, you know, I don't want us to go there.
Yeah.
That pulpit?
Not, not eas-, of the pulpit? No, the pul-, it spins, but it doesn't move.
Spins.
That table, that table, we'd have to move that out of the way and put another one in. Yeah, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be, uh, the other thing we'd do is, well, it'd be somebody's back, no matter what.
You just let Eddie set up at the front.
The easy thing would be to put it to one end of the room.
Then we lose, then we lose the pulpit. Well, we could do that. I mean, the pulpit, the podium rather, sorry.
I called her a pulpit.
I felt like Aaron was preaching at us, so.
I just saw Randy, I was like, man, go on, brother.
Um, we could, we could do that. We could put it-
Just put it in an end for a while and see how it works. Doesn't work. You spin it where it's looking that way, we get this end, chairs go over.
It's hard because we wanted to get-
There's chairs in one side of this, one half.
We wanted to get a conference kind of atmosphere.
Let's do it right there. Right there. And then we put the ta-, tables over here, then this can spin and look that way. That'd be, that's all both of them.
And then would everybody be facing one, one direction?
No.
No.
We could just be over there, but nobody can get to me like Mr. Bangs right here, get hold of my neck too easy.
Oh, I see. A little separation.
He's already pulled my ear three times today. My dad.
Does that, does that get what Eddie was talking about? That somebody's back's going to be the-
Well, I'm, I'm not worried about my back being turned to the crowd.
Like this.
But, but I, I-
Make the U like this.
I think it would be good for consistency that if, you know.
If you turn it this way.
I mean, I'll say anywhere you want me to around that table over there if it keeps us from having to buy a table and it improves our security.
What, what about, what about at the committee room at the police department?
We could do it there.
We're just recording these anyway. I mean, it's, and so you- Well, you, and you got the, you got the, you got the big boards there, so.
Yeah, we could put that too.
Ah, you're talking, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me put the, the gallery above.
Cancel that table order.
Yeah, we can just meet there. It gives us a good opportunity to-
It's like $63, man.
Gives us the, gives us a good opportunity to, I mean, it's close to City Hall, gives us a good opportunity to go in that, that room. There's places to serve food and all of that there.
That's a good idea. Okay. Let's try that. We'll try that in February.
Yeah.
Drop in.
And when are we doing brainstorming? When are we going to do the other?
We'll get some dates together. Um, we'll see. Uh, we need one or two days.
Did you say February 14th?
No.
13th.
13th is workshop.
Yeah.
And then we'll work on a retreat date and work with a facilitator.
Yeah, Wednesday 13th, yeah.
Maybe go over to, uh, Chamber.
All right.
Something like that.
Yeah, I mean, really, workshops could look around. They could, they, they may not necessarily need to always be at one place. I mean, we could have one at the Chamber if they wanted to host it.
Host at the most.
Because I mean, workshops, I mean-
Somebody had to find, somebody will get me to the wrong spot. Running away.
I already go to the wrong spot for a month.
What, once in the same exact spot?
Any other business?
Not for me.
All right, we'll stand adjourned.
Thank you.